Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
I move that we approve the Fred Five for September 24th.
Hi.
Aye.
Hi.
Financials on our communication.
Um, that we accept the July 2017 financials.
Excuse me, with the air conditioner going, I think we're going to have to talk if we have to speak up just a minute. I did motion that we would accept the July 2017 financials.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments?
Aye.
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 Oh, Fred Five K, Stacy.
Um, Stacy couldn't make it.
Okay.
Um, this is the third year, I believe, of the Fred Five. Um, it had the same route as in years past, and Stacy did include a verbal description of what the route was going to be. Um, she's just asking for approval to go through the streets and to let the commission and the city be aware um, that the fundraiser is going on again. And that's on Sunday, September 24th.
I move that we approve the Fred Five for September 24th.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, a request from Mary Lou Johnson for to see a parcel in Heritage Heights.
Um, this is, I had a phone call just this afternoon, um, in regards to purchase up in Heritage Heights. I made you guys kind of a crude little math here. So, what she's, would like to do is, um, if you see the one at lot nine, she would, uh, was interested in purchasing the first lot, which is lot 10, to the right of it. And then she would purchase 10 from a private individual and nine is from the city of Washburn. Or, um, it's the same situation, it would be for lot three and then lot four on the opposite side. She's from parcels, so she was not able to come tonight, but, um, she was requesting to move forward with purchasing one of those lots.
And then three is privately owned also.
Pardon, I'm sorry.
Three is also privately owned.
It is, yeah. And I believe this is a lot like what Ty Sheldon did last year. He purchased the one lot and the second lot was bought for 2,500. I did have kind of works checked today and neither one of those lots have any services to them. They're just the vacant lot. And it would be one more house up in Heritage Heights.
So, the approval is for one or the other, but we don't know specifically?
No, uh-uh, no, she was just, um, she was just calling today, she didn't know if it was even a possibility and so she just asked for either one of those, what, what the commission would entertain.
So, what, didn't tell you it was 2,499, wasn't it?
I move that we go ahead with, uh, the purchase for lot nine or lot four, whichever she chooses, for 2,499.
I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Aye.
Sales and use?
Uh, the Washburn Sales and Use Tax Committee met on August 4th to finalize the 2016 commitment, or Sales and Use Tax Commitment for the project that's ongoing. Um, it was originally set to where it would accumulate money from, for the past two years, 16 and 17, uh, half of percent of all of this income coming into the street fund. The Sales and Use Tax approved an additional $32,000, which is a estimated $8,000 per month that would have generated, um, to go towards the 2016 street utility project.
That's for October, November, December.
Yeah. Uh, special assessments are going to be certified and done by October, and so we have to have a final amount that's going to be the buy down, so we know how to divvy up the assessments and how the final number's on it, and so that's part of that. To get those numbers ready.
And then, and this 230,000, also includes that 75,000 that was added in before?
Yep.
I'll move that we, uh, go with the, uh, Sales and Use, um, additional 32,000 for October, November, December, which makes the total buy down to 230,766 dollars and 11 cents.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Well?
Yes.
Helper guy.
Last meeting, Mary, um, I approach the commission to explain, uh, the cost overruns, um, so far. And, um, I presented the bill before, I'm looking at the new literature. Kind of less my stuff there. It was resolved because, uh, the balance between the estimate and the, and the actual cost didn't match. But now I found my error and, um, and the error in that was not adding in the percentage of roof area that, um, was originally estimated. And, uh, it's left a literature. There's a lot of detail there. I started by, uh, of the work I did do, I started by breaking down the total bill and the breakdown in labor charges. What was for the doors, in one document that you have there, what was for the tear off, what was for the installation. And, um, the other was, uh, extra framing and working on, uh, replacing rod of wood around the bottom. And basically, uh, for the doors, it was pretty close, 250 dollars. Tear off is nothing, it was after I tore it off that things got rough. So, I was well overestimate because of all the additional repairs. In order to complete the job once it was in, I had to do it. And, um, what I did is take these here uh, and put it on a spreadsheet, uh, actual versus estimated cost. Estimated labor for this particular portion would have been about 685. I'm looking at the sheet here. That's, that's a difference. If you have it. I can, uh, I didn't bring copies. Last time during, I don't know. Basically, the estimated labor was six, uh, should have been 685. It went over by 2,844 dollars for a total labor cost of, uh, 2,530. I estimated, uh, about 350 material. Took an additional 487 dollars in material. And you have the 836 dollars material and labor. It was 4,366 dollars, I billed you that amount. And if you add them all together, that was my error before.
So, the allowance we had was 3,000?
3,000 dollars, that was over.
All in right now, you're at 436638, and you opted out of the contract last meeting?
Well, the amount of it, uh.
The rest, the rest of the work, so then you're due 136638.
Oh, you got that bill in there?
Yeah.
I didn't bring the bill in. I, I wasn't paid the 3,000. You have either, yeah.
Over and above the allowance.
Right, right, yeah. And I'm just requesting.
Wasn't, um, wasn't that, that 3,000 supposed to be for like all the roofs or something, right? And then it just?
Yeah, yeah. So, what I did, for the sake of, we gotta come up with a plan. It took my actual labor hours and material, you know, that it was over by square footage. And, and projected that to the rest of the project. Basically, just the roofs and the backsplash, you know, because that's all gonna have to be done together. It could be less on the wheelhouse roof because, you know, once you tear it off, it could be good, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be that much very good possibility, but I don't know until I tear it off. But I can guarantee you, uh, the cabin and that backsplash area is really bad. It's gonna take a lot of, a lot of work. So, what I did, just for this area that I did complete over the, um, engine room, I kind of projected that towards, what the project cost would be. And, I don't know, do you have this sheet?
We've got it, have you?
Oh, okay, you have it in there, it's called the list and summary. And, um, there's a lot of details of each item. Uh, towards the back, if you want to review that, but it's based on the square footage, uh, of the roofs. Okay? And, um, uh, the wheelhouse roof, I used the estimate based on, on, uh, if I have, have to tear it off and it's all rotten and replace a lot of plywood and, uh, put the cross bracing in to get the crown on it, I estimated that at 2,666 dollars, the 348 dollars in material. Cabin roof and the interior, um, that interior being, uh, a lot of the ceiling and walls are gonna have to be tore out before you even do anything. Would be 5,336 dollars, 38 cents. The backsplash would have to be done at the same time, they're looking at close to 12,000 dollars to rebuild the back part of that ferret, if I do. You know, I can't do it this year, you know, next year's an option. It's in bad shape. There's some minor items. Some I'd, I'd like to tackle this year if you, if you want me to do it. Uh, the windows. And the front engine room door, I think should be done, just to seal up the engine room and the, and the cabin. Um, the deck repairs are gonna need to be done before you stain it. They're curled up, I've got some pictures up here. Pass it around, you got pictures?
Those were.
Yeah, they're curled up, one of them's pretty rotted, uh, I don't know where he's done it with, he looked at it. I think before you stain it, it should be repaired. And, um, just some of it for safety because the board's kind of curled up and I think we might have to get down inside and put some back in there and screw it down and then plane it. Plane this wood. Tickler is, I don't like this one, um, one piece of metal that's sticking up up that far on the far ramp or, um, it's on the south side. The rest is all pretty much verbatim from the last estimate. So, um, there it is. Um, does anybody want the, the paperwork?
I'll take it for a file.
Okay. I, I think you should have.
I do.
So, then you have, you have new estimates considering how bad?
How bad the other was.
But right now, you're into it at 436638?
Yeah.
Does that include touching up the paint on the new stuff you put on it?
No, no, that's, um, I, I did kind of break down the missing parts that probably should be taken care of. In the, um, your document, that would be this one. I think I have time this fall. I would have more time, Tom's getting a lot better. Once he can come back to work, it'd be no problem, but, um, uh, the windows, I, I could definitely do. Um, that would include closing the front part, so the, so the wheelhouse would be closed up. So, snow and such couldn't blow in there. Um, and the front engine room door is one we missed. I'd be willing to do that if you wish, uh, me to do that. The touch of painting, I don't know if you, this is kind of a, where I'm sitting here, I don't know how much the volunteer worked, how much is, you had mentioned that he had some summer help, wanted to do some more paint to do, painting or whatever, but the touch of painting, at least the primer should be put on the new wood. Which I could probably give before it gets real cold. So, this is, I'd be wanting to contract this, you know, time materials based on this estimate, and I think it's fair good. The deck, um, I'd like to get, I don't know if I have enough time, I've got a big project going on, I'll tell them.
So, is the 17,707, 17, is that for everything?
That remains?
Or with that, do we gotta add another 7900, 8200 dollars to that yet? Is that with your 4300 dollars already?
Hey, I'll get it back.
Roof and the backsplash, 17,707 is my estimate to complete the repairs as listed.
All the repairs?
All the repairs, yeah.
Now, what about underneath that, you got one for here, the wheelhouse roof and cabin roof and interior, one for 2,700 and one for 5,400. Are them two involved and incorporated in that 17,7?
Yeah, those are.
Those are?
Yeah, that's, this, this is the breakdown.
Okay. So, now that 17,7, is that including the 4366, or we're adding 4366 yet to that 17,000?
It does not include the 4366, this is what I mean. The 4366 is the basis for this new estimate. And, and like I say, it's an estimate. And generally, the way I work, and in this situation, I could, but generally, when you settle in and if I, if it looks like it's gonna go over, I'll stop.
No, I, I'm just, I just wanna get.
No, I mean, that's, if you, if you have any, um, that's, that's kind of how I work, I, 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 I like a number so that I can kind of try to stay.
When we started?
This time I do pretty good at, with the forestry department.
Normally, you would have called Police Reese and let him know there was one of them.
I, I absolutely did talk.
I was down there one day, every time.
But we didn't talk numbers, and, and he did mention to me if you, that if I'm gonna go over, I had to approach the, the commission. But, yeah, I was in a situation where I figured, well, if they don't prove it, I'll eat it, whatever.
I don't think that's the right thing to do, I guess.
Is there any grants or anything that we can get to help this? I mean, 20, 22,000 dollars to?
We can definitely start looking for 2018, you know, for the, for currently, right now, there's, you know, there's not a lot that we could do right?
I mean, they're available to us though, I mean, there should be something like that.
Not a lot, honestly, no, there's not a lot.
Well, I, I know the Washburn Lions have done a tremendous amount of work down there. And, like I say, you know, some of this under great supervision, you know, if you want to give your summer help, well, that'd be annoying to, you know, just bring me out of the liability portion, you don't work with them. I think there's a lot, a lot of things to do, and it's been rotting for a long time, it's, you know, it needs to be, there needs to be a more structured approach to these repairs as far as financially, I think.
I think the future, the big picture, we're gonna have to wait on that.
Yeah, no, but, but it has to be planned, it has to be planned.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm asking for right now, in presenting the, the reasons and, uh, and my experience down there, I hope you're happy with the finished product. It should last, you know, it's not gonna disappear in five years, I don't think.
So, what do we want, we wanna make a motion to approve the 436638, right?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
And we'll hold off on the rest, right?
Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, as far as the other stuff, you know, we spend this kind of money, we usually get, you know, bids from people and, you know, at least ask for bids, I don't know if we're gonna get any, you know, 17.
There is, there is some risk though, if we hold off on the miscellaneous, there's exposed wood, you know.
Well.
New wood sitting there that won't be painted.
But, there are some help.
I wouldn't wait, I wouldn't make real long to take care of that.
Can't they have about another week or so here, don't they?
I know, yeah.
Like, I, I did order another set of lots, I'll be billing if it'll be around, it's like 65 dollars. So, there are lots on everything now, there's panels on the doors that lots will fit.
Where did you get them, through wagon wheel?
I, I bought a map set originally through, um, Scott's Hardware. But they had a deeper thriller on it, which will work good for those areas that are chained or got a dip hole. And the ones I ordered from, uh, McMasters Cars, where I ordered them offline. They're, they're heavier lots for the, for the doors.
So, this'll go for rebid and then you can, you can sure chime in on that if you want.
You can rebid it, uh, you can use my.
Because you're off, we, the last meeting, we did vote to sever that contract.
Right, right, as written, you know, because the estimate was bad, that's why I wanted up. But I'm willing to do the work. You know, I can do a couple small items, you have this fall and transfer time because I lost my, my helper guy, helper guy.
Helper guy lost his helper guy.
Yeah. So, uh, any other questions or comments or? All right, no, yes. Yeah, have any, should just not worry about windows and that front door?
We'll look at it, maybe that's something our guys can do too, because it's just a few plexiglass windows, right?
Well, if you just wanna change windows, it'd be a lot less than this. I had, I had planned on putting, uh, something over the wheelhouse. I think I showed you that over the, where the actual front window is basically to it, because that's all.
I mean, I understand that too, but I think we need to look.
And you could do it, I, they, they got Plexiglas right down here.
Yeah. Well, I think they have it down here, plus they have a white one.
Yeah, I'm not sure they carried a Plexiglas. I, I didn't think maybe we didn't check.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a way the guys could go down there, maybe get a bunch of pictures of that place, the boat and stuff? Just every, every little detail that there is, just get pictures of it, please, that'd be awesome.
Did you get the city keys for the locks in the bow?
Yes, I did. I still have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, these locks I bought, I also ordered duplicate keys. The ones I did online, the other ones are duplicates from me down here, I was unsure if I could, anybody want some of this paperwork?
I think we have most of it, you've given it to us. Yep.
And, and again, uh, if you guys, uh, you mentioned you wanted pictures, if you want, uh, me to meet, meet you down there. Last week Larry, uh, or last meeting, afterwards Larry came down, I welcomed you. Once, once you've been on it that long, you kind of know it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Citizens Committee?
My name is Kristy Jager, and I'm here on behalf of the concerned citizens of our community. First off, speaking to the whole commission, we'd like to thank you for the hard work that you do. We know that it's not an easy job, and then oftentimes it's a thankless job, but we do appreciate what you do for our community. A committee made up of sponsoring citizens, which include Bruce Siler, Ray Hager, Judy Bowdre, Derek Lanning, and myself, we have taken the time and the steps needed for a recall petition of Commissioner Larry Thomas, and the Secretary of State has granted us the approval to move ahead with this. We find no pleasure in this task, but we also feel that our community has reached a point where we find it necessary to ask Commissioner Larry Thomas to step down from his position as president of the commission. Our reasons for our actions are as follows. Commissioner Thomason, Thomas's continued discussion of city business without having it listed on the meeting agenda. This excludes the opportunity for our citizens to be informed and participate in the discussion. As citizens of Washburn, it is our right to be given that opportunity to discuss our city business and to have it listed on a publicized agenda. You knowingly have conducted a subcommittee bid opening meeting outside of the boundary, boundaries of the North Dakota state law. And as a consequence, you have incurred an open meeting violation from the Attorney General. Sadly, this violation makes our whole commission and our community look poorly in the eyes of the state. By working outside of the established personnel procedures, Commissioner Thomas has created a hostile work environment and displayed personal bias to try and remove an employee without due cause. You have applied such unreasonable practices that our city workforce has been left discouraged and frustrated. In and out of city commissioner meetings, Commissioner Thomas has displayed unprofessional behavior towards the general public. This includes outbursts and demeaning remarks. The lack of respect for our citizens that take the time to attend our city meetings and voice their concerns does not reflect the opinion of our community, and it is not a desirable characteristic of leadership. Lastly, Commissioner Thomas has shown an unwillingness to change his practices. His disregard for suggestions and direction from fellow elected members of this commission His disregard for suggestions and direction from fellow elected members of this commission is unfortunate. These are the same elected members that are committed to upholding the laws of our city and state. We respectfully request that Commissioner Thomas resign effective immediately, so that our community can avoid the expenses of a special election and move forward with our city business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else on that? Okay.
I got, I got one thing to say. You know, it's one of those things where, you know, none of us want to be in this situation. You know, and it's, it's just, it's a situation where, you know, Larry, you've done a lot of good things. But we keep going back to some of the same things we did a few weeks ago. And it's, it's frustrating. It's just very frustrating. You know, and we've talked about it, Reese and I both at the previous meeting talked about how it's just, that's not why we got on this commission, you know? Some of the issues we had to start with, we worked out as a group, and they've been dealt with, but yet they're still brought up. You know, I just, I guess I just, I just don't know.
Anybody else? Okay, move on. Hey, to us?
Good evening. Um, sent an update to you guys, think you might have that. Um, just wanna give you an update of everything that, yeah, going on. Um, I'll go out of order of what's on the letter there, but we have worked through some more of our warranty items for the two thousand sixteen project. Um, the concrete pour on the Sixth Street drainage dish went pretty well. I was here, um, got some pictures from Mark, I appreciate that, and I was also here earlier that day when we had some rain, and it's, it's doing really well, it's doing its job.
That's the railroad tracks, right?
The railroad tracks, yeah.
Looks good.
Yep. So, uh, that went well, a few items still remain on that project before we can get it, um, finished out. But some other things that I don't know that we covered before, uh, on the Seal Co. project, work was completed on that, uh, around town. Um, I hope everyone thinks it looks good, I think it went really well. We, we went on plan quantity with oil, but typically with municipal projects, it's hard to be on plan quantity with rock, just because there's a lot of starting and stopping with the spreader. Um, so, um, I know we, we picked up quite a bit and we swept the streets, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Brian about that, but I believe they stockpiled all the rock over the city's yard, so. And I hope that you guys can at least have a use for that, since we ended up having to buy more of it.
We, uh, we generally, uh, use it throughout the year, essentially.
Okay. The sidewalk project, uh, all work has been completed on that, as far as the concrete goes. Uh, we just have some restoration work that's actually been started today, we've got some topsoil that's been placed. So we're gonna try to get the seating and, and topsoil put in here as quick as we can this week, so. Um, and when he gets done with the sidewalk stuff, that's the same guy that's gonna be doing the, um, the warrant items on the street project, so try to get those fixed up too, so. The two thousand fourteen project, warrant dams were completed as well, there's a couple little spots occurred that we did on Main Street. Um, and then there's, there's just, uh, a little bit of seeding that has to be done in conjunction with that. The water tower inspections, I didn't get a chance to talk to Brian or, or Adam about that today, but the one concern was to make sure that we had been caught back up with the plant, and that we had that, the Senex Tower full. Before we brought the North Tower offline to do the, um, we have to drain it, do the inspection, and any repairs that might be. So, um, but as, as far as it goes right now, that's still scheduled for August twenty-third for the North Tower, and the old, the old tower will be August twenty-fourth. And the old tower won't be drained completely, that'll be a robotic inspection on that one. So we won't have to actually have somebody inside that, so.
What do we check on the North one, cause we just redid that two years ago?
The North one is gonna be drained and inspected for any leaks that would, that could possibly be there, was it inspected two years ago?
No, it's, it's that new one, not the Senex one.
Not the Senex one?
Oh, the new, oh, okay.
And I don't think that one's been inspected a while, is that the East Tower?
That's east to me.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, I think some people call it the new new tower. So, um, yep, so not the Senex Tower, but the other one.
So I'm sorry.
Um, and then the two thousand eighteen intake prudence project, uh, we are moving along on that. Uh, we have gotten all the responses I think we're going to get on the environmental solicitation, and, and so far, there hasn't been any major issues, uh, any major roadblocks. Um, we have mapped the low flow channel and taken cross-sections of the river, uh, at where, where the potential sites are. Right now, it's looking like Site One, which is where the existing, um, existing water, the intake is right now, looks to be the best option. As we sit right now, we are still completing the, the tech memo that we'll get to you guys. Uh, the end of the month is, is the goal, um, which it shouldn't be, shouldn't be a, um, impossible task to do that, but. Uh, not only is it looking better for access to the low flow channel, but it's also looking much better for cost than either Sites Two or Three. When you take into consideration, um, having to, um, have, build a new transmission main to the, where the warrant plant is, so. But we'll have cost estimates in that tech memo as well, when it's completed. Um, we have requested proposals from the four different J. Technical groups, um, for, for Site One. So we received some of those proposals back, and that will be something as, in addition, that we'll discuss when we get the, um, tech memo out. And we wanted to go ahead and, and at least get those proposals in, so we could keep things kinda moving along, but. And I already talked about it, but we have one more meeting in August here, and that's the plan, to have that techno with you guys by then. So. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I had one back to seal coat, you know, I was asked here a couple weeks ago, what's the point of a seal coat, and I could make an assumption. Right, chip and seal, protect it, but what's the official, what's the purpose?
There, there's a couple benefits to it, uh, obviously getting the oil down is gonna seal up cracks that you have, and it's gonna keep the water out from, from seeping in, getting underneath the road. Um, so it's better to, to have your street sealed, um, so you're not having that come in, and then, uh, when you get chips on it too, it's just another layer of protection, um, you know. Versus your having surface, you know, gouges, marks being put in it, so.
That makes sense, and then a year wait, or a cycle wait, so you use that as a purpose?
Yeah, and when you build a new street, you wanna make sure that there's, there's, uh, no minor or major issues with the road, and putting a seal coat on there right away might, um, hide that. So we wanna make sure that everything's been good, it's been through at least one freeze-thaw cycle. If there's any movement going on in there, cracks or major issues, we can get those fixed before we cover it all up with a seal coat and waste that money, so.
Sure, that makes sense, Ed.
The road's gotta cure too, doesn't it? Helps to have that road cure up.
Cure a little bit and make sure that, that every, there's, there's no settlement that's gonna occur, but, um, I think, uh, by and far, the, the last two street projects went really well. The ones that we covered up was the, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen projects, so. Went pretty good, and, um, we got the, the patches done, and those got sealed coated up too, so.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, sure, they zoom.
With the sidewalk stuff from the stuff, uh, down here on Main, do they get all that reseeded and all that stuff taken care of from?
It's, it's not done yet, the, the sidewalk project, are you talking the?
Well, the, the Boulevard project, you know, from the street project, was that Sixteen's project?
There's, there's still, there's still some warranty items that remain for seeding and restoration work on the, this, the two thousand sixteen project, so.
Down this way, right, I mean, for sure, and?
Yeah, there's, that's, that, those two spots are actually warranty items from the two thousand fourteen project, and, and one of them, the homeowner actually went ahead and he, he did it himself, uh, and it looks really good. Um, we were gonna do that, but, uh, he went, he, he got on it right away, and, and he's already got grass growing, and I saw it to him, I got, we should've hired that guy for the city work, but.
Who was that?
Looks, it looks good, um, but the other one is down there towards the end, and, uh, I, I spoke with Quam Construction today, and he said that he was gonna have, uh, a guy get on that right away this week, so hopefully we, we can get. That's all that really remains for the two thousand fourteen, is that one spot down there, so. With everything else, and if you guys see anything that you don't think's being addressed, please let me know, and, uh, we'll make sure that we get it handled, but. The punch list has been continually updated and sent to the contractor, and reminders being pushed to them, so hopefully, we go out and get everything done before we get to the end of the season here, so. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Okay, portfolios?
I'm sorry, I have, excuse me, I had one more, I was on a, um, amended agenda, Ron Posteen stopped by today, and he thought that we had. A meeting last week, and so he's requesting a special permit for alcohol beverages, um, at his place, and he was a little confused as to whether or not, um, he needs a permit. And there is an actual language that says he does, he's, he's going, there's a bikern coming in, and he's going to cordon off an area beside the cabin, but he's not selling alcohol. It's just picnic benches, and they'll be able to purchase the alcohol in the cabin, and then bring it out into the area to, to drink with their food and stuff. But he said if he does need one, you know, he's willing to do that also, it's just a short notice, the meeting is on the twenty-ninth, is that right? And the bikern is the weekend in between, it's next week.
So the ordinance says he shouldn't have one?
You know, it says, um, on the special permit, it says, um, in the diagram. Why is it that, yeah? Um, it says to, um, draw the part of the building that will be used for the alcoholic beverages, for the alcoholics beverage business, and then for this, it says, sale of beverages and consumption of beverages sold. But that can go both ways, so. I have it prepared, if you guys wanna approve it, or if he doesn't need one, he's not selling outside liquor, he's just, um, having it.
Well, doesn't hurt to approve it, I'm sure, so.
Yeah.
I move that we approve, uh, Captain's Cabin and Ron's, um, request. Or, I don't know.
Yeah. Beer garden?
Sell, sell selling.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Okay, any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kid?
Hi.
Yes. Uh, portfolios, Keith?
Nope, nothing.
Reese?
The gutters and snow guards made it on top of the memorial hall, saw that bill come through, so that looks good. Old courthouse bids, have we had any bids on painting for that?
No.
That's still live. Ron, I you had asked earlier. And then coming up at the end of the month. The, uh. I think it's the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, either or, we'll have meetings for the library, and then the airport authority. Should be this month, so just for information, but that's it.
Budget meetings for the new meetings?
Not budget, just, uh, board meetings for those groups.
Um, when is that library, um, bid? Oh, no, I forgot.
Memorial.
The old court, the old courthouse.
Didn't really have a due date. I guess we haven't, we haven't had any bids since.
Okay, did we advertise again, or?
I haven't advertised it again.
Oh, okay.
For existing.
I see, okay, I see.
That's it.
Good.
Nothing?
Well?
Nothing.
Nothing. Joe?
Um, just in going through past minutes, we have a couple of areas that are still outstanding, so just to touch back base with them, I guess. Um, we have the special event permit that was discussed that we were gonna get back to. Um, so do you want that on the agenda for next August?
I'll let you know, I'll look through that again.
And then we had, um, the review of the properties, I've had a couple phone calls from people that have extra cars that are moving into Washburn. Um, and then we have the dangerous buildings ordinance that we had, had discussed. Um, the memorial building kitchen project, and we discussed about putting that into the budget, and letting go for it. And then at next meeting, we'll have the preliminary budget also. And then we have, um, special assessment committee meeting this coming Thursday, and hopefully, we'll be finalizing the assessments for the two thousand sixteen project, and then those will be coming to the commission as well.
Their next meeting's what, the twenty? Twenty-eight or ninety? Three day? I, I think, I got.
I think so.
Yeah, I got one more thing, there's an estimate here, uh, for that fish cleaning station. You know, Brian talked to us about it before. You know, what they're doing now is they're putting ten horsepower grinders in, street phase. Yes. That's what, even fish is doing everywhere, but we have to, we have to look it up. Uh, but they're supplying the, all the controls and the grinder and everything. It looks like the estimate is. For all this, I think you'll have one of these, it's, uh, four thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. You know, I think we probably spend that much repairing the old one anyway. Well, I would say we should, should go ahead and do this.
So is this the work Brian had, Brian did some research to figure out if they were providing the equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
He's been in contact with Bob Frelick from the game of fish?
I think, I think he's. Didn't he say their motor's already here or something, or the grinder's already here or something? So I'm going to move that we, uh, go ahead with this, uh, Weber estimate for, uh, fish cleaning station.
Now, on this here, should we, since it's not on the agenda, should we get another estimate, or?
Well, he is the local guy.
Oh, I realize that, yeah.
Would you want to?
I'm just gonna, I'll.
Yeah.
Do mine too, or?
Well, the last thing you just approved wasn't on the agenda either, so what does this matter?
Which one was that?
Captain's Cabin?
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
Not on the agenda?
I don't mind.
Those are made of printed before we had it updated, he had called, sorry.
So it was.
I have a motion there, second there. Unless you wanna advertise it here, but I mean, I don't think you should do.
Did he say when he'd get to it? I mean, is it?
I don't.
How long has it been out, it's been off for a few weeks?
It has been out for a few weeks, and, um, I think people are getting a little nervous about it, but, um, I think they're, I think Weber's prepared to, to go as soon as possible, that doesn't mean that another electrician would not. I mean, it's certainly up to you guys, if you'd like to do it. Um, Weber's, Brian had asked Weber for an estimate.
Well, we had discussed it last meeting, you know, so. You know, when we asked him, we had estimates, so. Anybody have a motion on the table? Somebody wants to second that?
Can I, can I speak up?
Yes.
Um, I was up there with Brian when, when they were gonna turn it out, I cleaned up some of the mess that was up there when the grinder went out, but. Visiting with Brian, and there's been some talk that we, the city might not get enough of the running for this year, since it's getting close to the end. Depending on if they were gonna be able to get parts and dissolve the.
You're talking about existing one.
Right.
Of putting in the new motor, then getting it rewired, and, I don't know, just visiting with Brian, I mean, um.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
He, he wasn't sure of the timeline, if this was all gonna get done in time for this year. You know, if it's only gonna be a couple weeks before it looks like it's gonna start freezing, the, the fishing season is.
The river don't quit until December.
I know, but they closed that down at first, first time it freezes.
Let's say there's a couple months left, anyway, I mean, I would think.
Just, I just wanted to put that out there, that there was some concern with Brian, with me visiting with him.
When did you talk to him about that?
Just last week, last week. And the old grinder was still in the back of the pickup?
If I may say something too, I've been approached several times about making that a year-round facility too, if we can enclose it somehow and heat it, so that it doesn't have to close down at all. That if, with the freeze that's coming and so forth, if we could put up walls and somehow maintain it year-round, so that the ice fishermen can take advantage of it all. so that the ice fishermen can take advantage of it also.
I guess my concern on that is, you know, we don't have ice fishing where we're at.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I'm talking about, like, on the river.
We have, we're right in the cross-section of all these fishermen from Bismarck and so forth. It would bring a lot of economic development to Washburn. People would stop.
Okay, well, anyway, we're, we're kinda getting off the course here, but, um, but that's something we can consider, absolutely.
If you're gonna spend the money, you might as well look at it as a project.
Well, I think we need to get the grinder going.
The reason I spoke up because of Keith brought up, is, you know, do you wanna get another bid? I don't know if, if the timeline is gonna, you know, be adequate, or if, I guess if Weber can get it done right away, I'd, I'd say, let's do it, but, you know, just depends on his, you know, his schedule. If it can save the city some money, I guess that's the reason why I'm speaking up.
Okay, can you have a motion on the table? Is there a second, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, now, put a discussion on that. Reese?
Um, aye.
Uh, Reese?
Aye.
Kid?
No.
Well?
Aye.
I'll say yes. Okay, John, do you have anything else?
That is it, thank you.
Sure, anybody have any? Okay, bills? Everybody get a chance to review the bills?
The bill for the controls adjustment, that was for the current system, that went, uh, Weber and the-
Correct.
The controls adjustment for the fish cleaning station, that was the current. And it's not hooked up, or what, whatever they adjusted?
I think that was before it was taken out.
Gotcha.
I'll make a motion that we pay bills.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
No? Yes. Okay, any adjournments?